It was just a face, the lights were on.
Very good.
You know what I mean, like it's.
Unlike me, I keep mine for, to the first wheel, that's all.
Yeah. But you know, think about it, like essentially we're leasing a car for a thousand dollars a year, two thousand dollars a year, and these guys are watching.
Welcome and good evening to the Spalding County Board of Commissioners Special Call Meeting. It is April 29th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. At this time, please silence all cell phones and all electronic devices. I'd like to ask Commissioner Dutton to lead us in the invocation and Commissioner Rita Johnson to lead us in the pledge of the flag.
Please arise and pray with me. Our most kind and heavenly Father, we are so grateful for the blessing that we have to live in such a wonderful community. Father, please bless us with continued unity, bless us with continued love one to another, and bless us with thy Spirit that it can guide us, be with us, and show us the chosen path. Father, be with our families while we're away, our first responders, emergency personnel, military personnel, and those that stand in need wherever they may be. Father, we pray for these blessings humbly in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Item four, agenda items, consider, consider the awarding of a contract for a forensic. Yes, forensic audit, thank you. All right, Dr. Lethner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A little, a little over a month ago, the county solicited proposals for qualified certified accounting firms to conduct a comprehensive forensic audit on all Spalding County accounts. We have received those bids back. In fact, if you look just in front of my seat here, you will notice all of the bids on the cart, they're, they're down just a little bit. We received 15 bids from firms ranging from Atlanta to New York to North Dakota. Quite a number of bids came in ranging from a cost of 1.2 million dollars. Let me get through it, one, sorry, 1.125308 was the high bid. The low bid came in at a range, which we found most interesting. It ranged from 30,000 to 100, sorry, 300,000. And the information inside of that bid was, we're not sure what Spalding County is looking for, and we will be more capable of providing a cost to the county once we are awarded the bid. Erica and I spent a considerable number of hours, many, reading through every single sheet of paper presented by each of the 15 bidders. And it is the recommendation of staff that we utilize, RSM US. That firm has 16,600 employees worldwide, dating back with a history to 1926. They have extensive experience in Georgia with key personnel, working not only in Georgia, but previous experience with the state of Georgia in the Office of Planning and Budget. They are an Atlanta-based company located at 1201 West Peachtree Street in Atlanta. The timeline, we had high confidence in the timeline that they would be able to complete the audit. They use a technology-based approach that does traceability and compliance to regulatory adherence. The timeline that they presented was beginning in May of 2024 and completing at the end of September with report out back to the board in October. They are a diverse company. That was one of the criteria that we examined for each of the organizations. They have a diverse team with diversity and inclusion as a part of their policy manual. With a cost of 185,750, they were our number one, and that was the recommendation of staff that we utilized this company for our forensic audit. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Yep. For everybody's knowledge, tell us the difference between the audits that we've had done from, that we do annually.
Malden and Jenkins?
Yes.
Yeah, the Malden and Jenkins audit, they do examine the, the ins and outs of the money that we provide for paying our bills for the county, but they do it as an aggregate. So they, they look at big portions of money that come through, and they examine the, the ins and outs, the beginning balance and the ending balance for, for large portions. They do not look at each individual transaction to understand compliance with each of the transactions. They, the company that we're looking for a forensic audit is actually going to examine using technology, the ins and outs of every transaction that has come through. They're going to examine the policies and procedures that we utilize for how we bring money into the county and how we pay money out. And then they're going to make recommendations for how we should, how we should change or update the policies and procedures that we have for, for our accounting teams. They're going to look at all of the accounts, and Erica, correct me, I think we've got 16 accounts total, so they're going to examine across all 16 accounts of, of the organization.
Are we confident in any referrals that they may have given us?
We did go back, I did go back and review the referrals that they provided, and then I went online and looked through their, their referral portion of their online website. Was very impressed with the information that, that was provided.
I, I've poked around in the audit world, some of our friends are auditors and my wife's CPA, and no one had anything bad to say about them. I mean, nobody like, was like, oh yeah, they're the best, but like, everyone was like, yay, they're gonna win.
I, I'm just kind of confused as to when we first decided that we needed an audit, not this January, but last January, and, and we were of the thinking that in order to do that, it was going to be one and a half million dollars, and here we are a year down the road, and now someone's saying that it's 200,000 dollars. So, so we, we got a year and a half that we basically lost. I, I don't understand that. I just don't understand how we.
Well, I mean, we did get some bids that were.
Malden and Jenkins actually provided us with a cost estimate back last summer and indicated that the full forensic audit from their firm would be 1 point X million dollars.
And I get that, but we already know, or maybe y'all don't know, but I also know that the audit that Malden and Jenkins provides us is nothing but a rubber stamp to the paperwork that we gave them. And we, we, we were all supposed to understand that when they came and stood in front of us and said that we were sound and had 11 million dollars in our fund balance, that they were talking about the water authority money. So, no confidence whatsoever where I'm sitting in ever having asked Malden and Jenkins to do a forensic, I mean, not that they're not good, but for me, no. So I'm, I'm just very disappointed that it took us 15 months to get to the place where we're, we're talking about doing an audit for almost a fifth of what we have been thinking about for a whole year. Not saying that I don't want to do it, I'm just saying that we should have been did this. There, there's no other way to say that. Secondly, I, I guess I'm disappointed that May, June, July, August, September, five months, that pushes us five more months down the road of not knowing what we don't know now. I guess, you know, you guys say they have, they have decent references. My other question would be, when they're doing the audit, you say 16 departments, is the sheriff's department one of those departments?
Yes, ma'am.
The court.
All of the departments are a part of this. The six, yeah, we're, we're looking at 16 checking accounts that the county currently has that we utilize to receive money and to pay bills, and they will be examining all 16 of those checking accounts.
So, is there any, any agency that the county has that will not be included in the audit?
No, ma'am.
So, what, what is the language in the, in, in any kind of contract that we're agreeing to that says that as soon as you recognize that there may be something illegal going on here, we need to be notified so that we can notify the sheriff's department? Because I, I'm understanding that's an intricate part of what we were trying to get to. I mean, you can do the audit, but if you hit a spot where, oh my God, that should, that should be a trigger, and if that's not in the contract.
So the MSA will come after you award them, them the bid, so there hasn't been anything to review?
So, MSA in English?
The master services agreement.
Okay.
And one of the things that is listed in RSM's bid package is that we will have, at a minimum, a monthly check-in with the team, so we will know every 30 days what their findings are. That gives them enough time to go through, make, make, go through the material, make sure that they are documenting it well, and then provide us back information that says, yes, this is illegal, or there, there's an issue here that we're going to examine more thoroughly. That's one of the things that we want to make sure that we do is include you as the board on those 30-day check-ins.
So, my understanding, just in what the sheriff shared with us, sheriff did share it with us, was that if at any time there is the belief that there is something illegal has happened, that that is, should be the trigger for us for him to notify GBI. Not to say that they're not going to complete it, but if all we need is verification that there has been something, then do we go ahead and let them do the other two months or the other three months, or do we say, okay, no, it is a, it's a criminal case, the sheriff's department is going to give it to the GBI? I, I want to know what that's going to look like, or what it could look like.
All right, we'll be more than happy to make sure that that language gets included in the master service agreement.
Okay, anybody else got any questions?
No, I'm just saying, I, I like the fact that they're doing monthly check-ins. You're good with, you know, basically the referrals, that we know that this, they have been with other counties and other government entities, and they've signed off on that.
Yes, ma'am.
And if, you know, not that the price will ever be right for us, but as long as it's something that we can actually afford to do, you mentioned the technology being a big deal, I think that's important, that moves us along, so, I mean, as long as you feel that, you know, it's something that we can build upon, you know, in the future, then I'm okay with it. If it's something we, we gotta have, I mean, we know that now.
So, the, the price is 185,750?
Yeah, the other question is, where, where would that money come from?
So that money will come from our fund balance? So that money will come from our fund balance?
So with with the one hundred eighty-five thousand, because that's such a, you know, the price is very low, and I'm not mad about that. But is it something that we're not getting, you know? Are we are we hitting all, I mean, we're getting everything that we need to have at that price?
We matched everything line by line for all of the information that was presented to us from all fifteen of these bids. And I I could not see anything that we were not getting.
All right. So you said Malden and Jenkins did submit?
They did not submit.
So so, yeah, I would just wonder what it is that they are they were going to do that was so special, that was over a million dollars plus, that RMS or anybody else is 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 doing. I'm, yeah, I'm just.
The firm, the firm that wanted one point one million dollars for the audit is a California-based firm, and they were going to take from May until December of this year. One of the things that I noticed when I was just digging through all of the information was the information that was presented by them and the information that was presented by RSM was extremely comparable. There was no difference in what they were doing other than just the three months that.
That it was going to take.
That it was going to take.
Okay. My question is answered.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve with staff recommendations.
All right. I have a motion to approve RSM for one hundred eighty-five, five, uh, seven fifty. All right. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All right. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five, zero. Thank you. Executive session, consultation with the county attorney or other legal counsel to discuss pending or potential litigation, settlements, claims, administrative proceedings, or other judicial action brought or to be brought by or against the county or any officer or employee or in which the county or any officer or employee may be directly involved as provided by OCGA fifty fourteen two one. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So move for the four going reasons.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hands. Five, zero. We're in executive session. We will go into executive session and then come back out here to end.
All right, motion.
Are we ready?
All right. Motion to come out of executive session.
Do I have a second? All right, I have the motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, we're out of executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to send a letter to our tax commissioner pertaining to the forensic audit and the accounting situation that has been ongoing.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Four. All opposed. One. All right, motion carries. Any comments on different subject? Any comments from commissioners? Just so everybody knows, Dave Lamb called me. He's getting ready to have a senior issues at the senior center. He does it once a year, brings, sends letters out, gets everybody because he's the head of...
Seniors, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And so, he just did one in Pike County. It was more of a listening session. Individual commissioners stood up and gave updates on what's going on in their district. I tried, I'm trying to push him into specifically a listening session. It will, it's on 14 May at 10 o'clock in the senior center. Please think about if you want to come to it. Last year, or two years ago when we did it, it was a, we brought in all the election officials and they all stood up and said something. This year, we're not doing anything like that. So, I will not be there. I have a medical appointment that I cannot move, but...
If I'm not in court, I'll be there.
I am going to ask Steve if there's anything for District Five to stand up and answer if that comes out. If nobody else comes, we'll let Steve just carry the ball for all of us to be able to... But the key thing is communicating to us what the issues are for seniors to be able to do that. All right? Any other comments? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, we're adjourned.